I can't, power on, okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 1st, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Our town administrator could not be with us this evening, so we are gonna do it alone. Opening, let's pledge the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivi- individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Opening comments? T?
We had a meeting on the 1st of February that was moved until Monday, the 5th of February. A lot of people didn't see it, a lot of people didn't know what went on. I just want, as far as I'm concerned, the Coast Guard Housing Design Development Committee, Peter Barber came up, gave a very good rundown on what they're doing, and I made a motion, Mr. Burrell seconded, Mr. Lombard seconded, for discussion, and we voted to tell the Coast Guard Housing that the Board of Selectmen wanted them to sell, be sold as individual units with zoning restrictions. Just to give the town an update, because I'm sure not many people saw that. Thank you.
Richie? Hi, Chairman, you've talked to the police, fire, and public works, and they're prepared for tomorrow?
Yes, I'm gonna read something for you.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, alright, so, this is from Chief Robert Dwyer. The following steps have been taken in preparation for the upcoming storm event. Adjustments will be made as the storm revolve revolves. Heely Bus Company notified in the event we need to evacuate. Towable pumps are in place, generators and small pumps, smaller pumps are available, fire departments, small boats are ready. The harbor master notified with four residents with small rubberized boats are also available to us. The fire, police, DPW, increased manpower for storm duration. National grid and gas and electric contacted, they are on standby to respond. The National Guard contacted two half-ton trucks will be stationed in town at 9:00 AM. Code Red said, were sent out to the residents, asking them to prepare for the upcoming storm. And I will remind people, if you have a catch basin in front of your house, and it's plugged up, you know, if it's got leaves on it, clean it, clean the gutters, do all that. It will help. Atlantic ambulance notified requesting ALS coverage, that's advanced life support in case something happens through the high tide cycles. Emergency management trailer moved to the Johnson School in the event we need to open shelter. State Police contacted, request assistance if the causeway closes. G&amp;J contacted for additional resources and equipment. The bear pond is being pumped down as we speak, so that, which is huge. The last storm, you have to remember, we couldn't because it was, the pumps were frozen. So, we've got a good, we've got a good head start on this. And tomorrow at 9:00 AM, the police department's emergency management officer will open, and then sandbags can be filled at the DPW. And DCR has contacted about our concerns with closing the causeway. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to Bob or any one of the on-duty officers. We are planning for the worst-case scenario and hoping for the best. I believe we have a majority of the critical areas covered. That's from Chief Dwyer. Now, the tide cycles, there's gonna be four cycles of astronomical high tides, high winds, destructive and dangerous, Friday at 11:15 AM and Friday at 11:46 PM. Let me remind you that the tide probably won't go back out from 11:15 AM, it'll probably go out about three feet. So, and these things just tend to roll up, as Richie and T and I have witnessed before. So, you gotta be really careful, stay away from the ocean, don't even think about going near it. And then Saturday at noon, 12:05 PM and 12:30, 2:00 AM. And hopefully, we'll, we'll be okay. Foxel Road, I asked them to get a pump down on Foxel Road to keep those catch basins clean, because they did flood out the last time, so, and hopefully, we won't get any snow with it. So, that's, that's from Bob Dwyer, the police chief, and we actually have, we have Mike Haley, Hallie, I guess he's the resident meteorologist, and Bob Dwyer was telling me, he doesn't, isn't anything this kid doesn't know, or this guy doesn't know about...
He does a good job.
About the weather, so, we, you know, we're gonna be calling him to find out what, what we can do. So, that's it.
If, if you can't get ahold of him, just call me, I'm Wally Weatherman.
Okay, alright.
If you wanna know.
Alright.
Also, I went down to the golf course, and the pumps had been gone on all morning. So, I talked to them down there, they had asked, and they need to have some more jersey barriers put along the ninth, you know where they park, Richie? Along the ninth, because when the tide comes up and over, it pushes all the rocks onto the golf course. So, if we could get four or five more jersey barriers, and, and I walked over with him, and they absolutely need them to keep out all that, so...
So, everybody just missed this. Pedro, they can't hear us out there, I'm getting text messages, huh?
Verizon's out.
What's that?
Verizon.
Verizon's out?
Yes.
Okay, what about Comcast?
Uh, Comcast is good.
Okay.
Verizon's out, not much we can do.
No. Well, okay. Okay. So, the opening con- Richie, anymore?
Yeah, the only thing I would back it up with, if you have senior citizens living alongside of you, around, you know of anyone, check on them, please, because we have the whereabouts to get them and take them out of the other home, and get them in a warm environment, and feed them as well, so, and water. So, we've got that set up, and especially the seniors, I know they don't wanna go at the last minute, but in some of these areas, Willow Road, Foxel Road, Castle Road, these are the roads of the flood-prone areas, so, I would make sure we keep an eye on the seniors. That's all I have.
Okay. So, is Verizon still out, Pedro?
It's out for now.
What's that?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, alright, fine, so Comcast is the only one that we have, alright. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of 2:518 and 2:1518.
Show over.
Second for discussion.
Discussion?
I would like to postpone the February 5th because the wording isn't done right on the last paragraph, which, selling the units with zoning restrictions, selling them as individual units with zoning restrictions.
Okay, would you make that, you wanna, okay, you already did, alright, so, I'll pass it on to Mary Ellen.
Okay, pass on, then I'll, yeah, I'll second. We can pass on them, right, we can vote them in now.
Alright, okay.
I'm with you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Richie, you're okay with it?
Okay, I wanna remind you that I voted no on that.
Right.
You know that.
On this?
On this, yep.
On the minutes?
No, I voted yes for the minutes, but not on the original paragraph, I voted no.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah, right, yes, I know that.
Motion passed, two to one, with Mr. Lombard voting no.
Right, okay. No. I'm getting text messages left and right, that's, if you hear a cricket, that's my text, and people from Verizon, obviously, there's no sound, so, if anybody out there has Comcast and they have friends with Verizon, give them a call and let them know that Verizon's out, so, not much, not much we can do about it, it's Verizon's issue. Okay, so, the minutes are done, so, obviously, now, I wanna go right to Rob Raymond, and he is from Zobrio, the company we use for our bookkeeping systems up here in the town, and he's gonna go over a couple of things that, you know, what the system does for us. Your microphone's working, you can pull it, yep, there you go.
Sure, let me, so, yes, I'm one of the principals at Zobrio, and we provide for the town of Nahant, your real estate billing, your personal property billing, your collection system, we have a cash management system.
Right.
The general ledger, accounts payable, systems as well, so, those are an integrated suite of, of systems that primarily work here centrally at Town Hall. And we have an upgrade that the town has purchased, that the town is moving forward with, and the, the date to go live is July 1st. This upgrade, although it is centered in the accounting office, one of the benefits, and I think this is important, is that what we're trying to do in terms of recommending how to improve the operations here, is to work hard to eliminate redundant data entry. So, let me give you two key examples of how we could do that.
Okay.
One, today, today, remote departments will, will manually create their expenses, those bills that need to be paid. They'll, they'll put them on a spreadsheet, they might manually enter them, they'll then get handed over for someone in the accounting office to enter. So, there's the ability to push that out to the remote departments and give them the ability to enter that data and have it flow into the accounting office. That's one piece that we're working with the accountant's office on with the new upgrade.
So, let me just stop you there, so that means the remote departments, that means like the police, fire, so each one of them will have a license to put their own vouchers in?
In, in essence, that's the ability, and to be able to look up information, so they're not relying on reports that by, you know, by the normal process are delayed when they get them.
Right.
So, there's an improvement that we've all collectively worked on. That's expenses. On the revenue side, there's the ability to do the exact same thing, so that when money comes into the town, whether it comes into, you know, someone for a building permit, a fire permit, what have you, instead of that being manually created, manually received to the payer, there's the ability to enter that data directly at the source and have it flow through the system. One of the observations we've had is that in the collector treasurer's system, a lot of that work is being entered by them centrally, and there'd be an ability to ease that workflow if it was pushed out to the departments. So, that's one of the things that we've talked to with the treasurer, on the treasurer-collector's side.
So, that's, that would be the receipts?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So, so, I guess my point being that we're at a point here where I think our recommendation is for the town of Nahant to start to work to decentralize input, so that we can save time. The town is growing, staff is challenged, and this is a way to eliminate this redundant data entry. The last piece that I think is significant is reconciliation. Today, there's the reconciliation of cash between treasurer and accountant, and the recommend, and the reconciliation of, of cash from the treasurer to the bank.
Right.
And the, and the bank piece is an area that is not being utilized today, automated bank reconciliation, so that's another area that we'd like to concentrate on because it's time-consuming. So, you know, the, the town has done very well for a long time, and, and the, and yet, it's grown, transaction volumes have grown, these are some ways to take advantage of the software, so that you can spread that out, both expenses and revenue. So, those would be the, as an overview, that, the kind of general recommendations we would have.
Okay, so, what, what percentage are we working at with, with us? We already own your system.
Correct.
And we have already paid for it.
Correct.
So, what percentage would you say that we're working at with it?
Uh, kinda taking a shot at it, but maybe 80%, you know, in some areas more than others.
Okay, so, we need to use it, I mean, we paid for it, obviously, so we need to use the whole thing fully.
Correct.
And, and, and the bank reconciliation, obviously, is a, is a big issue, 'cause I know that when she's doing something there, and if somebody comes in and bothers her, you know, it's an easy way to, and, and there's people up here constantly, you know, so, and that's, and I remember watching Kathy Famulari go through the same thing, and my sister-in-law Joni go through the same thing, where they'd have to stop, get out of that system, go into another system to get, to print something, to give to somebody, and that really can mess you up.
Yeah, and adding on to that, if you're spending a lot of your time re-entering data...
Right.
You're not spending the time to do the things that, that you're uniquely qualified to do, like the reconciliation.
Right.
So, if, if that re-keying in of data is being done where the source is, you know, my example on the revenue, where the money comes in, and you're reviewing it and accepting it and not having to re-key it, you've got more time to address, you know, taxpayers coming in and do the reconciliation work. So, we're trying to eliminate that kind of rote, mechanical work, you know?
Right.
Let's, let's eliminate that, and that's gonna free up more time to do the things that your professionals are, are here to do.
Right, okay.
I mean, that's, that's... This is more like a, like a bureau-based budget, where, like, we're centrally located, but here's your budget, it's all yours, you take care of it.
Right.
And I was gonna ask about the checkup on that, but the checkup would be, you go onto the system and you'll have other people checking on it, 'cause there are checks and balances here.
Absolutely, and I'll give you, a, a good example would be if I'm a fire department, and someone comes in for a fire permit, I'm responsible for that money.
Right.
And, and I create what is referred to as a turnover report, it's an official document that I say, I, I'm responsible for this money, and I'm gonna hand it to the treasurer. And the treasurer's not gonna accept that money until they say, well, I'm counting checks, cash, whatever the payment type was, and I have this report, I'll sign off on it because you're giving it to me. That operation is manual now. If, if the fire department entered it into the system, created that official report automatically, and the treasurer accepted it, well, right then, a copy of that goes to accounting, because a county's responsible to say, I know that the remote department gave you $10, and at the end of the week, I'm looking for that $10 to come to accounting. So, there's that triangulation, check and balance...
Correct.
That is today, manual, and tomorrow could be automated. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. And we pay for that?
Yes, you, you own the system.
You own the system, okay.
The, the only thing you would need, you know, is, is training if that's needed, or extra seats if that's needed.
Right, and we still...
But you own the software functionality.
And we still have, we still have training on the books?
You've got training on the books, in particular, on the accounting side, and pushing that out to the departments for their vouchers.
Okay, so, that's, right, and I, I noticed that you wrote in an email, and the, this will also allow the town to take advantage of our, and I'm not a bookkeeper, he, he worked for the state, he was in Arda, so, he knows a little bit more about this than me, this will also allow the town to take advantage of our advanced audit trail tracking for fraud prevention.
Correct. So, here's a, here's a good, you'll absolutely, that fire department example, well, and not that anyone we know of in the town of Nahant would do anything wrong, but, if I were taking that money in, and I had a manual receipt, well, I could, I could make that receipt out for $8, and, and pocket two, in my example of 10. If we capture the information at the source, if, if the way to give a receipt is through the system, well, the system knows it was $10. And if, if I am trying to do something illegal, and I go to change or delete that, the system alerts. One, it tells me why, which maybe I made a mistake, and two, your, your designated professionals, department heads, can look at it and say, wait a minute, what happened? This was $10 and it got changed to $8 by this person at this exact time. So, that's an example of where, when this gets pushed out, you're, you're no longer relying on these manual processes where there's still cash that's being paid. So, that was the, that's an example of that reference.
And, and let alone the potential for a lost piece of paper.
Right.
Now, that's gone.
And that's more what would happen, and then that becomes a reconciliation issue that takes someone weeks, perhaps, to figure out.
Oh, sure.
And, and now you're behind, so, it is a snowball.
Right, okay, Richie? Anything? Okay, alright, thanks, I mean...
There's something wrong between the treasurer and, and, we're not reconciling something. Something's gotta, I mean, are we gonna have, this is what, my second?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have the same problem in July?
I would hope not. I could offer this, I would, I would be happy, complimentary, as a, you know, to come in myself and sit down, you know, for a four-hour session with both departments, work out a plan, and say, hey, here's, here's our plan, I'd be happy to do it.
You wanna, you wanna?
I think, excuse me.
Go ahead, Richie.
You wanna talk?
No, I just said, say, contact, contact me and I'll, I'll set it up, but, go ahead.
That's great, that's very good. I think, you know, I don't know what the cost of your program was, but that would be excellent.
Well, I'd be, you know, let's move forward.
And then you should tie a sand on the end result.
Right.
Because I don't wanna be sitting here July 2nd, and we're hearing and discussing this and that. You know what I mean?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
That's very nice, thank you.
Yeah, that's all?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to do that, that way.
Just get ahold of me and I'll, and you have my email, and we'll set it up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's all I was gonna say, Richie.
And we'll come up with a plan.
I apologize for interrupting.
Well, get, no, get, get them both together and have them meet with you, and you can sit in the meeting, or one of us can...
No, we don't need, so they can, I'm not, I don't, you know, they need to sit down and train, I mean...
I'd be happy to sit down, come up with a plan, and provide that plan to you.
Stop all the, the other stuff that's going on, alright?
Yeah, good?
Alright, thanks. Thanks, Rob. Where you driving back to now?
Uh, back to Situate, batten down the hatches, like, like Nahant, where we, we get hit to.
Ah, you get it worse, though, I think.
Yeah, well, luckily, we're not, I'm not facing the open ocean.
Right.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate your offer. Alright. Okay, Citizens Forum, anybody want out there, you guys wanna speak?
No, we just couldn't, we, we watched the Bruins game, I wasn't, I couldn't hear the audio.
Well, Verizon's out.
Mario's dead.
So, if you have Verizon, you're, you're done.
Bruins and tides, I figured.
Alright, so they don't wanna speak, okay, you sure?
Just one, we couldn't hear it on TV, that's all.
Oh, okay, alright, so now, we're gonna go to project reports. I'll read it. Town has hired Anthony Attorney Richard Nylund as a special counsel in order to review and make recommendations related to the DEP appeal of the Conservation Commission approval of the Hard Design Reventment Project proposed for the 40-step beach area. Attorney Nylund has provided us with the attached assessments of the details of the DEP appeal and our options for going forward. I just wanna remind people that the DEP has superseded our order of conditions, like they did it at Northeastern a couple of years ago, and they want us to do a soft solution, which won't work. And we have Dan Coffe and our engineer working on this to try to get them to do it the right way, and it has been suggested by Attorney Nylund that the only option that appears to be consistent with the goals and objectives of the town is number three, and that's to design the hardscape that we need to get the permit, so we don't lose the FEMA grant, and with a variance, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to go for a variance with this. And that new amendment that we have going forward might help us with that, so, that's, that's pretty much that, on that, that end of it. Anybody wanna speak on it? Richie?
Nope.
Okay, the next one would be the WAF project. It looks like they're, they had some issues down there, the, the engineer did not do his job properly, and they had to take the Coffe Dam, the sheeting out, Justin would probably know a little bit more about that than me. They hit ledge, the engineer said they were gonna hit it at 10 feet, they hit it at 6 feet, so they had to pull the Coffe Dams out, so, what they're gonna do there is, basically, they poured two concrete slabs today, one yesterday, one today, Richie?
Yeah, they've got five, five pours.
Okay.
They've got two done already.
Right.
And then, let's see, for the third, and then they can put in the end, and, and beginning, so...
And the others are gonna be...
Very good sign.
Yeah, prefab, so it looks like they're moving along with that, it looks good, I talked to the guy down there yesterday, Richie talked to him also, I think that he could've...
Well, they really put the rebar, you know, the rebar of steel, in that concrete slab, and they're putting dividers, I believe, in between each slab, they're pouring, they're like 10-foot slabs, and that would, that would give the, during the cold weather or hot weather, the expansion, that's what those for.
Yeah.
That's a good sign.
I'm sure the three of us are down there every day, I know I am. Progress is, is going on.
Well, that helps.
And that, yeah, well, probably, I don't know.
Okay, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a suggestion to people if they can hear, I know Verizon can't, but if you could, you might wanna send a letter to the DEP, asking them why they wanna go with the soft solution on the superseding order of conditions. It doesn't make sense, it's our town, and we really don't wanna lose the roadway in front of Peter Rogal's house, 'cause he's liable to fall in the water. So, we don't wanna lose that roadway, all kidding aside, because there's, there's gas, electric, there's all kinds of water, sewer under there, and we just, we just can't afford to lose that, because the DEP doesn't wanna give us the, the true order of conditions that we need. You can ask, I will get you their, their address and the woman that you need to write to, and I would suggest that everybody write, write to them and say, look, we object to this, we want it done, and see how far we get.
We'll put it on the TV and the computer screen.
Yeah, good idea, good idea, okay.
Name and address, person they talked to.
Alright. Town Hall Office Hours is next, we'll continue that, I think that we'll just, we've, we've talked to the ladies, and I think we're okay with that for now, and we don't need to speak about it, do you want, T?
No, I'm for postponing it for a while.
Okay, yeah, alright, Richie? Alright, okay, we're fine with it, alright. We have the town administrator's report, obviously, he's not here.
No, the liquor license.
So, we can't, we can't really go through that.
Three C and D we can.
Yes, C and D we can, we have to approve some liquor licenses.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve one day all liquor, all alcohol liquor license, sorry, for Nahant Veterans Association, evacuation day, 3/17/18, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Let me do the next one, Rich.
David, was that D?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the annual YMCA 5K stride on 5/19/18 from 8:30 AM to 11:00 AM at Life Saving Station.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Old business, we, we have none, new business?
If I may, on old business?
Oh, okay, sure.
Due to the February 15th meeting, I move that the town council draft a letter of opposition from the Board of Selectmen to the Northeastern University for any further expansion. This letter is going to be sent initially to the Chairman of the Board of Trustees at Northeastern University and the President of Northeastern.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, motion carries.
Nice job.
Okay.
I have one more.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move that the speed limit signs be added to Nahant Road from the police station through Swallow Cave Road.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion.
Please. If you go down, I happen to be driving, so this goes way back, this is before any of this Northeastern stuff started. You go way back to when the Chief of Police came up with this beautiful study on putting up, uh, speed limit signs. I fought like you-know-what to get them down by Castle Road and to get Fox Hill Road. Fox Hill Road has a very nice speed limit sign, twenty miles an hour. Castle Road, twenty-five miles an hour, or whatever it is, they're stopping people who are driving there. So, when you're coming home, people, drive down Nahant Road, get to around Nahant Associates, look out your window and you'll see a speed limit sign. Go from there all the way up to Swallows Cave Road, there are no more signs. That's ridiculous, we should have signs. I had seven complaints, six from emails, of people speeding down Nahant Road. It's absolutely absurd. There should be signs there. And one more thing, under discussion, if you go down, pass here, and take a right onto WAF Street, right in front of you is twenty miles an hour sign, but there's nothing on Nahant Road. So I, I move, Mr. Chairman, that we, we take care of that immediately. We gotta stop these people from speeding. Everybody, probably us once in a while, too.
Yeah.
It's absurd. They're all around town and all of a sudden, and I just did it out of curiosity last week, and I was like, oh my goodness. So I think we should have that done immediately. So move.
All right, uh, and, and further discussion, um, they have to put speed limit signs leaving Nahant, there's none. So, coming into Nahant, you know it's twenty-five miles an hour, but Peter Barber, um, had come to me down the garage and said, there's no speed limit signs going out of Nahant, on Nahant Road, so-
The one across from Nahant Associates is the only one.
Leaving, so, right, so people don't know, so-
Oh, there's one up by Little Nahant, too, I see it every morning.
Okay, all right.
But that's it, too.
All right. Okay, all those in favor of having more signs? Uh, Richie, go ahead.
Well, I, I think we should suspend, have the police suspend until we get the signs up. I mean, I mean, no one knows the speed limit, I mean, how can we give them a ticket?
Right, and-
And say, what is the speed limit, you know?
Right, yeah.
I think we should suspend those roads, you know, from enforcing any speed limit until we get the signs up.
Right, well, a reasonable speed limit.
Well, yeah, I'm not gonna say they're going a hundred miles an hour and not giving a ticket.
Well, down by Nahant Associates, it says twenty-five miles an hour, and that's Nahant Road, so-
I wanna let you know that-
I would think twenty-five would carry all the way up to Swallows Cave.
I wanna let you know, and the, uh, all the cities surrounding us, Marrows, Salem, they're moving this, uh, speed limit to twenty-five and twenty miles an hour in the inner city.
Yeah.
All the way up to Drakehead, I, you know, I see it, so that people, uh, they're just, you know, I think we, we gotta slow people down, I just, you know.
Okay.
And then, once the public works, uh, we get a new superintendent in there, and hopefully that will be one of the objectives.
And I have one more, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
If I may.
Yeah. Uh, do you wanna talk on it, or you wanna throw it?
I would like to.
Huh?
I would like to, uh, we have an environmental, well, let's have town council do this. I would like town council to send a letter to the EPA requesting a, a study of the waters around by Pea Island, actually all around up there, because thirty years of pumping water out there without an, an EPA review, to me, is shame on Nahant. Shame on us for waiting. I think we should have a review of the ocean waters out there. And, um, I did a little bit, and I'm not an environmentalist, um, an environmental compliance audit, they call it a multimedia audit, identifying and auditing all environmental media such as air, water, waste, et cetera. I think we should request, have, uh, town council send that to the EPA from us, requesting that they do that.
Okay.
Can we?
We have to vote on the first one, though, the, the speed limit.
Can we vote on the speed limit?
Oh, did I jump ahead? Yeah, a little bit. That's all right. I've done, I've done that before, too. So, all those in favor of the speed limit?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so now this, next motion is to, uh, have the EPA do a, a, a water quality, um, test. We already do the water quality, uh, out at Forty Steps, um, all the different beaches, but you wanna, want them out?
I, I, look, I was born and brought up on, on Pea Island in that outside area.
Yeah.
I went out there many times. I did some fishing out there. I wanna know what's different now than it's had thirty years of pumping water into it.
Okay.
It's-
You know something, I'm gonna make a phone call tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I want you to realize that in checking, Northeastern has never received a permit for that upfall, and, uh, taking water out of the ocean, they have never received a permit, they never applied for a permit. So, uh, I mean, that's, uh, record, so we, that's, you know, we're gonna have to go after them for that.
Okay.
We should have the town council, in the body of that letter, ask them to apply for the permits that they haven't applied for in the last fifty years.
Okay. Um, I haven't seen it, I know that some of the people around here have looked on, you know-
I read it, I have it.
Okay, they have a permit?
No.
Northeastern does?
They don't have discharge permits, they weren't required to have one, because they fall under the legal-
He should, he should actually say that.
Do you want, come on, why don't, come up here, uh, Justin, sit up here and tell us.
Yeah, Justin?
This is Justin.
Am I repeating that?
Sure.
Thank you, because you can't hear.
The, uh, I've read the whole permit today, it's eighty pages long, uh, and they, uh, they, they did reply for everything they were supposed to reply for in two thousand and eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, it's all building up to when they did the work. So, and also, uh, they didn't need, they don't need a NIPSE's permit, because they're under a million gallon for discharge. They only need that if they go over a million gallons.
Right. So, here's, here's the other thing, I, I, um, as, as far as, as far as their permits, they don't have a permit, um, they, they're gonna need a permit to pull those extra pipes out that they already have there. The pipes that they left there, they need a permit to pull those out, and they're applying for it now. Um, I sat on the Conservation Commission when we gave them the permits to, to do what they wanted to do out there in two thousand twelve, I think, and they pretty much didn't tell us that they were finished, because they weren't finished, and they got a certificate of compliance for it, which really should've been revoked. But anyway, um, and I'm gonna just bring something up, um, and, I, and, and I'm not defending anybody, but what I'm gonna tell you is, that whole MEPA review, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I got a, I got, and I, I have to say this, because I believe in just telling the truth, a certified letter was sent to me, to the Town Hall, and telling us that they were gonna have a MEPA review a month before they actually applied for it. So, they're not as guilty as everybody thinks they are. They, they did, they did inform us, they did inform me, however, I've still yet to see it. It was never given to me, all right, which is an internal problem up here, um, and we've-
Still puts the town and Nahant in a bad spot.
I understand that, but I just, I just, I just wanna, I just wanna clear the air on that. They didn't try to pull the wool over our eyes on that, because we would've got it out at a Selectmen's meeting.
That's not in here nor there, I mean, we're at, we're at the point we're at now.
I, I, I understand that, but I had to clarify that, only because I think it's only right to be truthful with everybody, that they didn't, you know, I don't think it was any ill intent on their part.
Oh, absolutely, that's why I wanted to talk, talk about the permit, 'cause I read it, I have no problem.
If I may, gentlemen, my, I'll, I'll call the motion, 'cause we went way sideways. I just want the EPA to come down and look into stuff.
Okay.
Can we vote on that, then we can talk about whatever we want.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. So, I will call the EPA tomorrow, I know exactly who to call, and, uh, we'll have them do a water quality, uh, index out at, uh, Pea Island.
Well, I, I want town council still to draft a letter, 'cause Richie's right, we gotta put his stuff in it, too.
Oh yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Write the letter, not just one person calling.
Yep.
And, and, no offense.
No, I know, I just happen to know somebody from the EPA, so, um, and I'll, I'll ask them what the procedure should be.
The gentleman wants to talk.
Mr. Walt, Christoph, yeah?
Thank you, Chris Walt, um, just have a question, um, thank you for making the motion. Um, do we have any information about the baseline water quality from thirty years ago that we can compare against?
Probably not. Right.
Okay.
But if there's a chance that certain things are not growing there, there's something on the bottom of the ocean, I need to know.
Sure, I'm, I'm just curious, there was just-
Thank you for that.
An innocent question, whether we have a baseline, because that would be really interesting to compare with.
Probably not, probably not, but if the water's a lot warmer than it is somewhere else, why, what happened, I, again-
Great, thank you very much.
Really wanna know.
Appreciate it.
Is this public now?
What's that?
Can people hear us?
For Comcast, not only Comcast, Verizon they can't.
Okay.
Well, you only talk on-
What's the matter, don't you like the Comcast people?
Well, I like the Comcast people. Well, then speak.
You can speak, what, what'd you wanna say? Oh, okay, um, I'm sorry.
This is being taped.
Yeah, it's being taped.
This will be played next week.
Over and over again.
Over and over again, so.
So-
People, you can speak.
In case you got insomnia.
It's about fifty percent Comcast, fifty percent Verizon.
Got it, thank you very much. I forgot about the other.
So, I, you know, I think we're on the right track, we have, um, we, we, we are working on it, I know you guys are, you had a, I went to the meeting at the school, by the way, and it was very well organized, they're, they're right on track, they know what they're doing, um, and we're gonna need all the help we can, I mean, and, you know, the Board of, the Board of Selectmen are gonna need all the help we can in the town, so, I applaud them for that, uh-
Some, and if I may, and this isn't a motion.
Yep, go ahead.
I think we should consider some liaison somehow as a board with, with the group. I don't know if that sets up a bad precedent for every other group that comes in, but this is so important to me, that I, you know, I, I really think we should look into that.
I think you're right, T, but I, I, we, we need to ask, uh, the attorneys.
Sure.
Well, whichever attorney law firm that we choose, we're in the process of choosing a law firm, uh, it's two in the running for this whole project, and they're highly into the environment, and they're very good, they're very, very good firms, and, uh, we just discussed, and we get the proposals here, and we're just reviewing, and then we'll probably get a vote, and then we can allow, you know, know that, uh, I was talking to Mark Collin, and we'll keep you advised as we proceed. I know you've got another side of it that's gonna proceed as well, but, and, you know, it's gonna be two sets of law firms going after this thing, so, you know, we, we gotta keep you informed and vice versa. And I think the chairman should be the designated-
I remembered what I wanna talk about.
Let Richie finish first.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
You should be, uh, as we go through this, you know, either one of us, team, he might be the, because he'd be the chairman come, come May 1st, so, he might be the one that-
Do you wanna be the liaison? You wanna go to meetings?
You could be, well, just, it's just, just to keep everybody informed of what we're doing, team, and I'll offer, what we choose, and then, and Mark Collin, from that, he's the vice president of that group, and he might be the one to coordinate their side.
Well, their, their group, I guess, um, they're working under the, um, they're working on their own, but they've, they've joined the Preservation Trust for financial reasons, I believe, so, and that's actually a good thing, I mean, the Preservation Trust has done a lot of good stuff, we, we've designated, uh, the Board of Selectmen actually gave them a piece of land on Forbes Road, and, and they go around and they, they, they take land, so, they're good at that, um, there's a question. I, I, go ahead, Christoph, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Walt, again, I just have a question. You mentioned that you are contemplating to interview, get legal advice, uh, on this matter. Um, working in medicine, I understand that, you know, we doctors, we sub-specialize, and, and I think lawyers do the same thing. Um, is there any particular angle that you're aiming at, environmental, anything else, uh, or what, what, what are you trying, if you feel comfortable commenting on this?
Well, I, I really don't, I think that we, and, and we have to be very careful what we say, and I'm gonna, I can tell you right now, I'm not gonna tell you who, what, what we're doing.
Understood.
Um, because that would be a huge mistake, uh, I don't want that to get out there, um, I just think that the Board of Selectmen need to work for the town, and, uh, in the town, we, we are working in the town's best interest, and we are all for, you know, not having anything out there. Uh, that's our goal, all right?
We could tell you that.
There's, there's a cou- Richie, please, I'm speaking, all right, there's, we, we have, there's two aspects to this, there's land and there's environment, and that's, that's pretty much it, uh, so, that's, that's what we're looking at. And I, I really don't wanna delve into this too much, Richie, I'm not gonna, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut it off now.
Don't. Then don't.
And I'm gonna cut it off now, because I really don't wanna get going on law firms and this, that, and the other thing.
If I may?
We have several law firms that have looked at this stuff, and we're working towards a goal to, uh, get the best bang. T?
It was important to me for the whole town to know, to get these things out and started, it, it's very important, the, the traffic one just blew me away, 'cause I've lived here all my life, it's like, wow. But really, take your time and drive up, you'll go, jeez. If you find one, let me know, if you find a speed limit sign somewhere up here. But, uh, I think this is as far as I really wanted to go tonight, um, because the, the legal stuff is, we're surrounded with legal stuff, but I appreciate it all, thank you.
But, but they should know that these firms that we're looking at, environmental people, and they're very, um, very high in that area, and that's, uh, two great, two great firms. Problem that we need to adjust and see from this side is money, is we really, the budget is extremely tight, we really, we're up against it, and we've gotta figure out in the board, along with the FinCon and the town meeting, which avenue and which approach we're going to go for this. That's from this side of it, and not, not anyone else. And then we'll keep you apprised exactly what's, uh, to see, but it's not gonna be, it's gonna be, it's not gonna develop. They go update every, every week or every two weeks, you know what I'm saying, it's just, we got a ways to go here, and it's gonna come down to legal, you know that, I know.
And, one final thing, because I, I, as, I'll be chairman in two months, but I started And, one final thing, because I, I, as, I'll be Chairman in two months, but I started on the fifteenth, telling the whole town, this is to be full transparency. If he said, he said, he said, he said, it means nothing, it's gotta come from the full board, and this is Nahat at its best, as we all know, so, we're gonna do this right, 'cause we have to. Thank you.
Keep them entertained, gentlemen.
I'm not entertaining anyone.
I gotta, I have to get a piece of paper.
Anybody wanna say something?
Because you texted me.
Can you, can you come up and fill in the timeline reading? Chairman took a five-minute recess without telling us.
No, he's coming.
Gotta do this.
I need this. Sorry. Oh, Town Hall hours. Alright. So, I think that we're pretty much at the end, I mean, if you wanna...
Well, no, I gotta make this motion here.
Yep, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, the, uh, the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to set the warrant for fiscal year twenty nineteen, the annual town meeting, scheduled for April thirty, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, for discussion, discussion, there's a couple of, um, there's a couple of flaws in the, in the warrant, and, um, Article twenty-nine has to be redone, um, I was with the fi, the Finance Committee last night, and we wanna know, um, there's a couple of things in here, that, I, I don't know where they came from, and I'll, I'll get a hold of the Fire Chief tomorrow, the automatic sprinkler systems for lodging of boarding houses, the multiple dwelling units, so there was a bunch of different, um, questions that were, that were, uh, brought up last night. Uh, I think that they're, they're pretty good with the, the budget, um, and the, and the salaries, but we'll, we'll go through that later, um...
Twenty-nine has to be...
We also have the, uh, bylaw, the, uh, stretch energy code that's on there, that looks good, um, and that's it, so, we will be opening the, the warrant again to, to fix it.
Why, why, why don't we just leave it open, and we'll pass it, until we get these corrected, then we can vote it in next week.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna have a meeting next Thursday night, by the way. We're gonna have back-to-back meetings, Thursday nights, this, this week and next week, and, um, so we'll leave that open for now, so we can, you know, work with the FinCom on the warrant. We have an executive session meeting coming up at approximately nine P M. The gentleman's not here, but we can adjourn to go into executive session. Um, we have a couple other things, yeah. Now, well, we did that, D P W Director's Search Recommendation. Well, there was a couple of recommendations on here.
It's the full one that he put, that the Town Administrator put in, right there.
Okay, then, if you wanna go through that, go ahead. Are you prepared to, are we prepared to hire him tonight?
No, I would like to postpone that, but I wanted the people to know that that was on the agenda.
What, uh...
D P W Director's Search Recommendation.
That's number five, B.
I'd like to table that till next meeting.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go through it then.
If you don't mind.
Five A. I don't have it, okay, that's fine, that's fine by me, so we're gonna table the D P W, Richie, is that okay with you?
Everybody?
Richie interviewed, uh, I, I interviewed one guy, he interviewed a couple of guys, and you wanna, and obviously interview...
I didn't interview anyone.
So, you wanna interview that?
No.
You don't, okay.
No, I just wanna put it on hold for a week.
Okay.
Well, you, T, you need to interview those two, the two final candidates.
They're the only candidates, so you should probably sit down with them.
You need, you need to interview, you know, just, whatever you...
Okay.
Next Thursday night before the meeting, that's all.
Sure.
Just have, uh, one of the secretaries set this...
Set it up, sure.
Alright. Okay, so that's, that sounds good, um...
Charles Kelly Scholarship.
Okay, this, the, the, yes, the closing announcements.
These are just announcements, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. That's all yours, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, so we all, we have the Charles Kelly, under the, uh, closing announcement, we have the Charles Kelly Scholarship, it's due four, six, eighteen, uh, see the website or go to the Town Hall to ask about it, um, it's a thousand dollar Charlie Kelly Scholarship, and I believe, Richie knows a lot more about it, you wanna speak on it?
Well, yeah, it's just an annual, uh, it's a, uh, a scholarship in memory of Selectmen Charles Kelly, and it's, um, it's five thousand dollars, and I might suggest that, uh, there's other scholarships on our website, uh, for students going to high school and college, and it's for a couple grand, a couple, it all adds up, so, if you have time, you should apply for the, uh, for the scholarships.
Excuse me, Richie, it's a thousand dollars, right?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, I meant...
And last year, you made it a thousand.
Right, yes.
I remember that, 'cause it was five hundred.
It was five hundred, right.
Good, that was a good move.
Okay, and we also have the American Legion, uh, Scholarship, and that's due four, thirteen, eighteen, and again, you can go to the, uh, the website and get that information, that's the easiest way to do it, and I encourage every person that's going to college to, to apply for these.
Go pay for your books or something, there's about fifteen scholarships on that page, so...
Yeah.
It's worth it, it just, these are date sequence, the first two that are due right away.
Alright. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, go in executive session and not to return to public session.
Okay, uh, roll call, vote for that, all those...
I'll second it.
Okay. We need a roll call vote.
Taylor, yes.
Richie?
Lombardi, yes.
And Barrell, yes. We are adjourned and going from public session into executive session.
Just note that they're, send their exemption to, um, contract...
Yes, okay, so, it's to discuss strategy with respect to non, uh, contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
And, uh, and actual litigation.
And litigation, as well, um, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, uh, since an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the position of the town, if so declared by the Chairman. Thank you.
Who's that?
Huh? Pedro. Shut it down.